Twenty-two, the Super School Board meeting. I'm Erin Peter, the superintendent and the reorganization meeting of the Super School Board, so I'd like to call to order an afternoon seat scan for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and should we recover from what stands on initiation under God, we give this order to the Secretary of Defense. Now, our first order of business is for the board to elect a chair, so I'd like to call for nominations for the position of chair. I'll nominate Forrest to be the chair. Is there a second? Okay, or do we accept that nomination?
I do accept that nomination.
Are there any other nominations for the position of chair? I nominated Kelly. Is there a second?
I'll second that nomination.
Okay, Kelly, do you accept that nomination?
I do.
So we have two nominations on the position of chair, Forrest Carter and Kelly Huber.
It was almost closer to rock paper scissors than anything over here.
I like it. Take the buck, I mean, one of the other.
So I'm sorry, can I withdraw your motion?
I do.
Okay. The nomination of Kelly is withdrawn. We have a motion on the existing nomination, remaining nomination. I'll make a motion to nominate Forrest Carter as the chair of the Super School Board.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's now the voting.
Yeah, it was a bit. You go ahead.
I feel like it's hard now.
All right, thank you guys. We're going to move down to item B on reorganization and appointing the board vice chair. Do I have the motions to nominate an individual board member for vice chair?
I'll nominate Kelly for vice chair.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You just want to do the online nomination.
What would you prefer?
I just need to know which way.
You just need the content.
I just need to know, do you want to call out? Do you just put up?
No, I already voted on it. And how about, whatever, whatever.
We'll continue it online.
Yeah. Okay. So I'm waiting for three votes now.
If I'm not in.
We need to try to find it.
Yeah, it's wrong.
Are you guys logged in? March 15th?
I'm in, but I'm not.
But you have to be.
Right.
You logged in, not just opened it up from the public view. There should have been a little tab to join the meeting.
Give me a gender and print to be a gender.
Okay, so that means you're not logged in. If you log in, you click it, there'll be a little tab to join the meeting.
I'm making it on the screen.
Oh, it's the four dots, is that same?
I got Jennifer's.
Okay. Why can't you even find the meeting?
There should be a feature on the front page that is. If you just go to board docs.
Okay.
Board, is it close, I didn't.
Yeah, I have the board docs. Oh, hold on, that's where I signed, that'll be good. I am, it says board docs. I don't know who's the meeting.
Did you log in or not online from that?
Yeah, it looks like she did log in, but it's.
I did.
How about four dots and a period? Now we're doing more troubleshooting when that happens again, look at that.
Yay.
We heard the beep, all right. All right, we're going to move down. We're going to move down to reorganization, let us see, it's going to be for the board committee.
So I know you're missing a member tonight. If you want to postpone some of this, that would be fine, but you can also do those need with the operations side policy because those are very important.
Okay, would we be okay with that? That would have an idea of what you would want, but why care to be able to choose that?
I'm already on the operation, so it's okay, you guys all just stay on it.
All right.
I don't know about policy, but.
I do not mind being on the policy.
You guys are more off on doing it more than each of those.
Yes, if we can just keep those two forward and in the next meeting we will continue the reorganization process. Let's look at the approval of minutes for February 7th, 2022. Any discussion, any questions? All right, do I have a motion to accept those meeting minutes?
I make the motion to accept the minutes from February 7th, 2022.
I will second that motion. All in favor?
Aye. It says I was absent. That wasn't the meeting thing. Oh, yeah, I returned it.
You would have stayed, not.
All right, now it is time for our public comment. Do I need to read all this stuff? Great, does anyone in the audience that has any public comment for today's report? Nobody? Oh, yes, all right. I knew if I used the auction lingo, that might have been more better.
I'm here on behalf of the Seabrook Middle School Drama Club. We had a student here, there was an emergency, I just forgot. So you got me. We invited each of you and have invitations for you to attend our upcoming play. So we have tickets for each of you. We hope that you'll come and enjoy all of the hard work that the kids have put in. This is our fifth year. You're welcome. This is our fifth year. This is Rhonda, I think. And then there's one for the three not as well. Great. This is our fifth year and it's myself and these moral along with our administration who help us back these kids and it's just this wonderful little motley group students who work so hard and try so hard and we only get like a really small amount of time to do the play between athletics and the February vacation and the April vacation, so we'll not have the April vacation this time, but we really hope that some of you can attend. And that's it. Thank you so much.
Awesome. That's exciting. I'm so glad we continue. Any other public comment for this report? All right, we're going to move on. We're going to move on to section five for reports and first up is superintendent's report.
Sure, so I'll keep it brief. Congratulations from Patrick, his election to the Super School Board. We have elections obviously in all of our districts and several board members will be joining across the S and U. So to that end, we are holding orientation meeting for those board members next Monday evening, starting at 6:00 PM. And then our joint board meeting on the 30th will be the National School Board Association. Part of that meeting anyway, providing a super overview of those responsibilities of the board and working with the S and U, but something goes legal, things around rights and no requests and communications that should be informative. There's a lot, there are many other items on that agenda as well. And we're just looking at early April as the date for our next meeting, because I would say we represent around, so. I do understand that was a really good meeting, so thank you guys. One, and it was really, it was actually really informative that we, things that we couldn't necessarily hear about unless we hear it straight, because there's so many education that are going before the, so this is a, it's a great, it's a good time to go try and push there, so it's, and for them to hear from us too, just with our.
And those are really simple, it's a little bit of a hack, it's a little bit of a passport that's not going to be shut down. They're going to be able to look at a little while. I really understand you would be beneficial if you could still do that and check it out. Generally, from that, I would definitely encourage gentlemen to do the NHSBA kind of professional development workshops that they have. I'm actually going to be attending the right to know one in April. If there was ever a year to get, you know, brushed up on all of those details, this was the year, so. And then I believe Rhonda, if there's any workshops that are through there that connect to you.
Yeah, just let me know what you want to attend, so I get the purchase order, need to register. And then you guys will have that.
Awesome. Does that feel good? All right, next up we have curriculum instruction and assessment report.
Thanks, that's me, likewise, I'll keep it short. We have March 22nd coming up, we have the safety and security pass course meeting and we're lucky enough to have it at S and U 90, invited board chairs, et cetera. We're looking forward to a good diversity meeting for the first time in a long time. We continue our work with DEIJ, Diversity Equity Inclusion Justice. You guys do have a policy meeting coming up in March 23rd. And probably regardless of the upcoming policy meetings, we have professional development related to, to a lot of different, acceptance of a lot of different classes of people. And we're working the Seabrook, I'll like on that. We're at 34% of Seabrook today, we had Mr. Constance certified, double certified. And I can, Rembrandt is certified as well, so we'll walk it there, it's just a matter of, and that's it.
So there is movement, that's, there is movement. Congratulations to you guys. Moving down, student services report.
Thank you, my report's attached. I just wanted to highlight that last week during the election, all of our staff, all of our employees, administrators, teachers, EAs participated. It's professional development around social emotional learning, specifically about the culture and circles of social emotional learning, health and wellness, as well as kindness. So everyone participated in Zoom sessions according to their grade level. And also, we provided these books, Kindness by Yves DeCraff, a revolutionary guide for the way we think, talk and act in kindness. So staff had the opportunity to dig into that ethic and in honor of overwhelming requests for time and space, we allowed employees to participate from home remotely. So we have since had overwhelmingly positive feedback on the structure of the day, so we're really, really pleased about that. All right, thank you.
I've heard really positive things about that, yeah, so I think that this was a really great professional development for our educators. Anything from the board, new session? All right, thank you Caroline. On, we have the SEI's principals report.
Great, so I'll start with our recommendations. Our new school nurse is officially in full time, Nurse Miller has done a great job getting her students already in families, so we wanted to welcome Nurse Miller. A special thank you to Mr. and Mrs. Small. Mrs. Small is running the Kindness Olympics, which is continued. Right now we're doing Kindness on the planet, on the planet, and students are collecting things that they've done to kind to their families and friends now. So thank you to Mrs. Small for that. And there are wolves staying after school, collecting sap, working with fourth grade and fourth grade students. So if you see the front of our school, the buttons that are aiming, our third and fourth graders are making maple syrup and they will be boiling here this Friday and next Friday. It's really interesting to see that, and they'll be presenting to the students by that this night, so that's exciting. And then our social emotional team, our SEL team led by Mr. Han, our guidance counselor will be in a spirit meeting before vacation and we had a really kind of fun, every morning we started with a special guest here, so students didn't know what a reader was going to be. They read a book that went along with the theme for the day. And so a special thank you to Superintendent Nenu, who read a story for us one day. Forrest read one day, which is a great surprise for students to see Forrest. We had a firefighter actually pulling the fire truck over and he read from the front of the school with a fire truck behind him, that's really cool. Firefighter Brian was his name. And him or his, it was our fourth grade case maker, so there's some information about that in the report about the crazy hair day and generally the fun and information. From our curriculum instruction assessment, I want to thank our proven coordinator, she's done a great job on the coastal part on her website, so if anybody's interested in actually seeing pictures of stuff from what's happening in the classroom, there's a link on her website on the curriculum to visit some of the great stuff she's doing with our teachers and our students. And also thank you to her for organizing a full day of FOTUS, you know, waiting training. She had 10 teachers go through that training, or not. Music concerts, so one more final thing, our music teacher is excited to have music concerts, we've got all the dates at the bottom, so all, first, second, third, fourth, but as well, concert in person, and we're really excited to be able to do that. So thank you to Miss O'Farrell. I did want to say one more thing, we are working very closely with our families, our new social worker, or new social worker on the trucey policy and trying to make sure folks know that even with COVID, now we're trying to get back into regular attendance and so we're working with families to make sure they understand that we have resources here, for sure that we get their students to school, but I'm making home visits, checking in with families and so we are increasing some of that presence to make sure our kids are prepared. Thank you.
Brian, what do you see as some of the biggest barriers for these families? What are the reasons why it's, it's written in the report?
Every family is different, even one of the, one of the themes that we've been between masks and not the mask, and I'm sick, when should I stay home? And then, I think, the emphasis hasn't been there for a few years and so now for me, there might be some learned, like, we're kind of coming back to, it is important to be at school and there are reasons why you wouldn't be at school and there are reasons why you need to come to school. And so it's kind of a responsible thing that I am taking on to make sure I don't come to school, so every family is different.
Seems like it's a great neighborhood. All right, excellent, thank you Brian.
Can I just say something?
Yeah, absolutely.
I just want to let you know the feedback from families about the movie Monday and being to party Friday, so that makes it easy. You're doing such a great job. Thank you.
I just want to come back to.
I'm going to jump on that too, because the SEL briefing was incredible. For students, we've got nothing, but yeah, it's really cool that everyone's kind of doing the same thing. It's a really great atmosphere, yeah.
So the reading will start, we're actually going to be doing a school by Monday meeting every Wednesday, so our, Mr. Han right now is collecting books, so we'll do that every Wednesday. So we do a pledge, we're doing it with the video, now with Google, now we've learned how to do this, it's really easy to present in a classroom. So our goal is to continue with the school, I don't know if we're doing it every week.
That's awesome.
It's fun to pull up, drop off. Brian's up there, he's. No, so that's always a fun thing to do. It's always getting excited. Not that I'm going to relate, but other people might relate.
I guess, I'm just.
All right, Brian, thank you. All right, we have the SMS principals report.
Thank you. I want to give a couple of thankings, one to Mr. Mrs. Goldberg, who are my parents of one of our seventh graders, they approached me after the winter concert and said, how do I make a donation to the music department? And they've issued generous donations to help the music department, so that was really nice and of course, I was really was super excited. Also, thank you to the nutrition department, they have done a great job of getting the fresh fruit vegetable program going in the afternoon in the middle school. And so every day there's something different, students are trying new fruits and vegetables and getting pretty excited about it and our health club, interact club and student council are helping to deliver, so that's really, really well, so we appreciate all the efforts there. This month, so each month I'm going to highlight a different subject area this month, I highlighted language arts and I'll just review quickly each thing, I'm sure you have it currently to look, which is for other people in fifth grade, language arts, they've been working on the industrial revolution and how work was dark for machines, which I'm sure is not in a world into any of them. They're reading a novel together and learning about factory life and the work in the little wheels, which is, it's nice for them to hear how close that is to where we are and also that, her since youngest, 15, earned $2 for it. So they have a lot of conversations about these things. In grade six, students finished up short story unit, there's photos there and they worked on a Venn diagram where they were comparing and contrasting two short stories. And they were, they were getting into that, working hard. In seventh grade, that was pretty, I put a link in there, maybe, so we have looked at it and take a look, just because there were so many pictures, I didn't want to leave any out or amend them all into my report, but they were working on persuasive essays and what they ended up doing was sharing their persuasive essay with a company and they mailed the essays with letters to companies and they received a tremendous amount of response. They received, they lent chocolates, sent ones to a huge amount of chocolate, they got gift cards, coupons, it was really exciting for them to see that they got mailed back from these companies, it was pretty impressive, some of the companies, the one company called was on the phone with the administrative system, they're quite sometimes just so excited about the project, so that, that was exciting. So again, if you haven't had a chance to look at them, take a look and she did a slideshow that explains the whole project. And in eighth grade, language arts is study Greek mythology, they have a focus on narrative techniques and summary writing, they get really into the Greek gospels, which is exciting. And the other thing that we see eighth graders working on right now that they get really excited about is issue numbers, a great job with passion project and they get to pick that subject matter they're choosing that they're passionate about and do a lot of different writing about it, research about it, so that's awesome too. This evening, language arts, and students took the NWDAs, so we are just getting the full results back, we're taking a look at that data, we're working on making sure that students are getting interventions they need based on that data and also looking at the growth that they made from the fall, so that's been some good work. And also just wanted to let people know that we're gearing up for the antler size testing that we'll have after April vacation and the teachers have their schedules for students to take that. And then just some highlighted things in the calendar, which is at the end of second trimester, parent conferences the next two days, our trimester will start next week, and our work cards will be available soon after that. Spring pictures are Friday, we do have internet safety, internet technology safety presenter coming on the 29th, so that speaker is here all day, so she will be 45 assemblies, so she can hear it towards each grade level, because one of the graders should hear, one of the eighth graders should hear a little bit different, and she tailors that and then at 9:00, 6 o'clock, right here, will be a night for parents, so I encourage people to come submit here. I'm sure many of us already know that keeping track of what's socially moving on their devices can be a full-time job and it's tricky, so she'll have some great tips for parents that will attend that. Just the other one else in here, the play that Rebecca talked about is April 6th and 7th?
7th, 6th, Tuesday, Monday.
It's 7th and 6th, I wrote it in here on my college. So that will be another same thing, and then the spring concert, something else that the board is making, spring is busy.
Right, some exciting stuff with the board here, the spring. Yeah, Erin, I was going to ask you, is this a new thing with the fruits and vegetables in the middle school?
So, yes, yes, yes and no. What happened was right prior to COVID, we had a whole plan in place to bring it over and do exactly what we're doing now, and then that didn't happen and then last year was a whole other animal and so and this year, what's been happening is they've been doing it with the breakfast. So they've been getting it all year, but it really isn't to be a separate program from breakfast, so they're getting it in the afternoon, so that's just been, we're finally able to get that going and get it everywhere. So it's fun to watch the kids, I wasn't sure, you know, they would actually get excited about the different options, but it's been fun, I mean, the kids are delivering, delivering it, but they feel really proud that they're helping to build those maps.
Yeah, I love the whole system, I think, I think it's awesome.
Nutrition department, I think, they really, really good job, I think.
I remember that student council, the person that, or the, is it like an election? Where you're going to have it in school, where they choose?
Yes.
Okay. So I knew I talked to you about this very much, about possibly getting whoever the head of student council is, maybe as a board, not member, but a.
Student president.
Yes. Because I know there was a kind of does that and he was at the legislative meeting, it would be really awesome just to hear his point of view and then to have that, and that board, I think, would be great, so.
I love that, and Erin, as I talk about that, we've been talking about the Chinese, we can do it sort of equal, and we can talk more about that, I've never seen, I've not seen it done in.
The member of the president of the school that.
Council.
Yes, there we go, student council, having a student representative.
Okay.
For the. I think it was really.
One of us members?
No, having that student, who was the president, actually, I don't know, that student.
So like a better, so they'd be here as a representative for students, but then, you know.
I think we're all.
As a whole, it's.
More student.
It's common in schools, less common in middle and elementary school, maybe, and sometimes their goal, that, you know, the country is more just going to report, and they don't kind of comedian, they may not be able to stay a little time, but certainly people try to get that started and invite them to stay for sure.
And, and this is obviously, I mean, ultimately, they don't, they don't really want to, and that's a different story altogether, but.
You got voted in your style.
Sometimes it's not as exciting, run your court, but for maybe every other meeting or something, like, if we involved.
Well, it may not be that the student council president can't do it or wants to do it, but I think we have other students, and actually, we're having to, yeah, other students from absolute watching, using.
I think including that is essential, I think that's really awesome, and I'm assuming that when we organize the April meeting, we'll look at that and see where it is and see the structure. Cool, any other discussion from the board? Karen, thank you very much. On to finance report.
Thank you. So I want to first update you on the results of the March 8th election and the five warrant articles, school warrant articles that were put on the ballot. Unfortunately, all five did fail, so that includes the operating budget, which failed and is on the agenda for later this evening to reallocate funds utilizing the default budget for next year. Obviously, that has a, has an impact on what we, what we're looking to do next year from an operating budget standpoint. Additionally, the paving warrant article failed, that was for $125,000. As you know, we have a multi-year paving plan in place, as we are seeing the parking lots deteriorate and become less safe and having some drainage issues, et cetera. As we are seeing, the parking lots deteriorate and become less safe and having some drainage issues, et cetera. Our tractor warrant article for forty-five thousand dollars failed. This is to purchase a new tractor. Unfortunately, we are now going to have to repair our current tractor. And we're, we've actually just, we just solicited some bids, and that's going to be approximately seven thousand dollars out of this year's budget to repair the existing tractor. And that is a, you know, a tractor that is old and will continue to be repaired as it ages. Additionally, we had a warrant article to fund the special education expendable trust for fifty thousand dollars using unsecured fund balance that failed. And that will, that's a trust that safeguards this school district in the event of unpredictable, unanticipated special education costs. As we know, it's a volatile account, and it can be physically challenging. And finally, the citizens petition warrant article, the child benefit services, which funds expenditures to Sacred Heart. That was in the amount of just under seventeen thousand dollars. Also. So, moving back to this current school year, I have included the expenditure in revenue reports year-to-date. We are tracking well. On the expenditure side, I will note that we have recognized savings for salaries as we've had difficulty filling positions and we've had some staffing changes that resulted in lower salaries. So that also has reduced costs on the benefits side for areas such as health insurance, dental, FICA, retirement. So we have some savings across the board in benefits. Additionally, if you look at our special education account on page two, we are over budget by forty-two thousand dollars. You know, our tuition, which is out of district, is, account specifically, is over budget by a hundred and four thousand dollars, but we are recognizing savings in other accounts. So we still have three and a half months remaining. So we are, we are monitoring that account. But those are the exact costs that we're hoping to, that the trust is used to kind of save the worst against. Additionally, on page five, you'll see under technology, our new technology equipment account is over budget by just over seventy thousand dollars. That was for the purchase of Chromebooks for next year that will be reimbursed via the E-rate, the federal grant that we applied for and received approval for. So once we actually receive those Chromebooks and receive that reimbursement, that will revert back to, you know, be reduced by that amount. So that is a little bit of a misnomer. If you look at page seven, under buildings, you'll see repair and maintenance is over budget by almost nineteen thousand dollars. And this is primarily due to encumbered funds for the U three floor replacement project that we had approved last month. Additionally, you know, we will, I will, I'm sorry, step back. That will also drop off because we plan to utilize the building maintenance expendable trust. We'll, we'll take a look closer to the end of the year and determine whether we can absorb it to the budget or if we use, utilize the trust. But I'll make a recommendation by the main, I think. But that will go further in the deficit because of the aforementioned tractor repairs. So that will be closer to twenty-five thousand dollars. So revenue side, we are fortunate that due to the pandemic, people, I think I mentioned last tour, being people are not seeking medical attention. So our claims history has been reduced. We received a refund from health trusts for health insurance premiums. So we do have an anticipated revenue of just over a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. Our employees who opt in to health insurance and dental also received their portion of their refund on this past month. Otherwise, you know, overall, we're, you know, we're at a little over half a million dollars in available funds. So we're in good shape right now. And if you have to answer any specific questions you may have, individual accounts.
I do not have any questions. Matt, this looks, I'm sure that you had your torpedo for you. I mean, that's a few days. I know that smile. All right.
Force of business.
Excellent. There's no other discussion in the board. Hold on. Thank you, Matt. All right, heading down to the facilities report.
So Peter's report is attached. It's a summary of current projects around, across the two schools.
Any questions on any discussion in the facilities report? All right, under continuing business, COVID update.
So we are required, and we are, to still have a reopening plan as part of our received dental plans. So our plans from the beginning of the year had still been posted. And given that changes that occurred in March, according to CDC, we have updated that. And so no real changes in the first two slides, or really the third slide. But in this, the fourth slide, that now references the community levels metrics that the CDC is currently using. Those are really more about hospitalizations and case counts rather than percent positivity and case thresholds that we were using previously. So at last glance, Rocky County was a low, or considered a low level community. So the recommendations for the three levels applied into the chart. And then if you go down, what previously was two pages has been consolidated to one page with respect to the medication members' measures. So you'll see that masking remains optional below medium and is also optional high. And thus, we're advised differently by the nutrition department, Health and Human Services. We were told by our nutrition commissioner of education that they were the only body that could be doing that recommendation this time. Cleaning, hand washing, and respiratory hygiene have to work. Covering your mouth, blocking your nose are all recommended across these three levels. People are still asked to monitor themselves for symptoms. If they have any new infections from COVID, they are still asked to stay home and then be tested. Same for sick stay home. Athletics and cook regulars continue with normal participation, as do field trips and travel. Visitors and outside facility use may be limited if you use that high daily transmission level. I'm sure about it this time. And otherwise, it's basically the same thing.
Question. So will we, when will we be starting to do in-person teacher's conferences?
So conferences for this time were already scheduled. Though I know that there are some of the people that reached out and teachers are able to accommodate that. They're certainly looking to. But yes, I mean, those are, conferences are, they will be in-person.
Any other discussion on the questions? Sounds very scary.
Does the middle school, does the middle school do conferences? Last week, right after vacation, we're fifth grade, I gave mail to each grade level separately. From this, to the fourth grade. But certainly, any parents.
I got the elementary one.
Yeah, so you can reach out to the team. I don't know if their conferences are full, but they'll certainly make a great estimation.
So the next round that we have, which is they could just have a standalone one for.
Well, we've had a lot of feedback from parents that online is convenient for many. Some do have the possibility to work or have childcare for their children. So both options will be available.
Any other questions from the board or the station? We'll move on.
Yes.
All right, we're down to 2021 audit governance letter, financial reports, and federal fiscal monitoring reports.
So this is audit fund.
I knew it was going to be that.
It's really consisted of two audits. The first of which is our annual internal audit from Plazek and Sanderson. I had reported that in September, the preliminary results of that audit. As you recall, we, you know, from the fiscal year 2020, 2021, school year, we are returning over six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in unsecured fund balance to the tab, to the assessments. We, we had a couple audit control recommendations that included updating our policies as well as updating procedures. And there was a, there were some federal, federal grants audit recommendations as well as far as timing issues occurring, incurring the cost within the timeframe that we indicated in the grant. So that's, that is all, that's all included here in the final report. So that includes the audit governance letter with the accompanying financial statements. The second item is the federal fiscal monitoring report. And that's, that's done at the state level to ensure that we're following federal guidelines for our various federal grants. So as a result of that exercise, we've also included that report in board docs. Similarly, we are, we, they did find that we have to update our procedures. We recently adopted policies for these, to administer these federal funds. That's part of our policy committee work. However, now that we have those policies, we need to have the corresponding procedures that roll into those policies put in place internally, you know, and at the school level, at the SAU level. Additionally, there were, and I'll note that we need to put those procedures in place by June 30th of this year. So we will ensure that that gets done. Again, there were a couple small items that they noted. We, we had employees who signed off and approved timesheets prior to the end of the actual pay period. So oftentimes, we will purposely do that at the end of the school year to ensure that they get signed because then they're gone for the summer. However, we've been informed that that is not proper for practice. So I, I am worried about actually getting those signatures, but we are going to do that going forward. Additionally, you know, we had contracted with the Perkins School for the Blind and New England Center for Children. And we did not solicit minority businesses or women's business enterprises as part of that process. Additionally, we didn't request sole source approval. So essentially, we had looked at it as these are, those are really options for those particular students. However, we need to go through that exercise and disagree with this of minority and women-owned organizations as well as look at other options. So. So the, so the bottom line is we need to put those procedures in place by June 30th. And that will occur. And we have to answer any other questions that you may have.
I do not. This is actually, we do a lot of this stuff in the way of our grants as well. So I'm a pretty well person in this way of, we're going to do other buildings. Any other questions or discussion? Matt, thank you for, and for putting the time into all of that, about computer. Really time to consider. Let's move on to revised 2020, 2022, 2023 operating budget.
All right, so as I had mentioned earlier, the proposed 2022, 2023 operating budget did fail passage at March 8th ballot. So as such, the school board is now required to approve a new operating budget utilizing that default budget number. So that's an amount of sixteen million, eighty thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. That is two hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars less than what we proposed. So as such, we, the SAU team worked with the building leadership team, and we have a proposed budget included on board docs. The changes are highlighted in yellow, but I'll briefly summarize those adjustments that resulted in that total reduction. So we were fortunate to have some staffing changes this current school year after we've gone through this budget process, where the new hires came in at a lower salary. So we were able to recognize thirty-eight thousand dollars in savings by reducing those salary accounts. At no impact whatsoever to the, to our operations. We all, similarly, we're able to reduce two educational associates from our regular education. Classrooms based on a revised classroom need. So that's, you know, you relook at our, you know, our layout, how we cover our different rooms. As you know, we're reducing the classrooms, the total number of classrooms based on student enrollment decreases. So that was able to be reduced. Additionally, we reduced our health insurance. And so that's our health insurance premiums. And that is based on two items. One is those staffing changes that reduce the, not, not reduce it. The elections that those new staff members took happen to be less than what we, what we had budgeted for. So, you know, we budgeted for a family plan, they take a two-person plan, et cetera. Also, we budgeted for a guaranteed maximum rate. So that's the GMR back in October. That's the maximum health insurance rate that, that health trusts can charge us. Well, it's a rolling basis, it's an eighteen-month claims history. So the actual rate doesn't come out until March. Actually, I was promised that rate today, but I haven't heard it from our rep yet. But there's potentially a delta now in that rate. So based on our claims history, based on the fact that we've done refunds the last two years, I'm anticipating a lower rate. So we're able to reduce our health insurance. So that's a total of, you know, just over sixty-eight thousand dollars that are reduced from our health insurance accounts. Additionally, we reduced the contracted services. Now that's, that's not a reduction of services, but a funding source change. So we are proposing that we move the elementary school SAS program into the ESAR grant, and then we'll move it back into the operating, into 2023, 2024 school year. So, so as you, as you're hearing this plan, we're, what we really intended was to minimize impact and not have to cut any services or people as much as possible, but look at creative ways to allocate our funds. Additionally, we were able to reduce our special education transportation. So a bus, by one bus. And that's, that was based on changing student need, fortunately. So that's just over forty-five thousand dollars. And then there's also a corresponding reduction in FICA retirement costs based on some of those staffing changes, you know, twenty-five and ten thousand dollars respectively. So that, those are the changes in a nutshell. We, we feel pretty good. So, um, that, those are the changes, and in a nutshell, we, we feel pretty good, um, that we're able to absorb, you know, two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars without what we think is, um, has to impact on operations.
I don't see a lot of, I don't see any student services being on the schedule, so any discussion from the board? You guys definitely put a work into it, how nice job we're taking kind of a difficult situation and still working with that.
And the credit really goes to Aaron and Brian, because they're the ones that had to, with, along with their team, sort of really prioritize, um, you know, accounts and, you know, services. It's a lot of work, because as you know, our budget, you know, we, we take a real, a real fiscal, fiscally conservative approach to our budget, there's not a lot to cut. You've been through the process, you've looked at all the accounts. Um, when I first heard that we went to defaults, I was beside myself, I'm like, oh my gosh, we're gonna have to cut people, I mean, it's like, where else is it? Where's the money coming from? Um, but, uh, I mean, Brian and Aaron really did a big test.
I have a quick thing on budget, too. I wonder if, and I know we've had lots of meetings where we go to comment and listen, but we all know that people don't come to listen. Um, and so when we get down, when we get down to voting time, I mean, we'll see where, like, the last page, and there's a lot of other things that the board is checking, no, because obviously they don't want anything to change on, on the taxes. I wonder if there's a way that we can distribute more information about the things that we're specifically asking for ahead of time, so people know what that two hundred and sixty thousand dollars really means in, you know, in terms of if we default, this is, you know, these are things that potentially could change, and then also with, you know, the tractor and those things, like, we hear what you're saying about it being old, and it's going to be the place we're, we're spending money on anyway, but when people don't come to the meetings, they're obviously not hearing that information, and so I just wonder if there's a better way it really means to, you know, our school and our kids, if we both know on X, Y, Z things, then this is what could potentially.
How many impact, yeah, specific things that we're.
Because I just think, you know, the warrants, like, you know, are small, so we need a new tractor, okay? Uh, we don't need that new tractor, you know? You know, but if we're comparing, you know, what we're spending seven thousand, you know, we're doing that, then, you know, probably there won't be this year, a lot didn't get passed, you know, when we were using this rule. Yeah, it's like the town. Right. So hopefully next year, yeah.
Yeah, so, so I agree a hundred percent. I mean, we do our best to let people know that we have multiple meetings that are, um, that were actually live streaming soon, but we also have a public access TV, put it on your websites, we create a PowerPoint that synthesizes kind of what we're looking for and why it's important. Um, I think the one area that I've seen, like, other boards do, is actually, is actually send out, like, put together a mailer and mail out, shoot. Like, that's the one area, oh, it's, we also put on social media now.
Yeah, yeah.
No one's looking at my social media, but, but they might, you know, they might look, you know, um, and I'm not a fan of doing social media, but, um.
But there is positive.
But there's, but there's certainly a mailer, um, that, um, that I know other, some of our other school boards do, that, um, you can go direct to the voters. And give just, we can just give some faults, you know, like, why is this important? A couple of not shown, so.
Yeah, as board members do, we don't have to worry about lobbying and regulations as well.
So it's not lobbying to say, but you have to not be, um, telling voters, right? So there's, there's a time, you're providing information, um, and you're educating voters about the impact that we have in our, but you're not telling.
We really want to start basing, vote for this budget, right? All right. So take the first right now, guys.
A bunch of hearing, you know, you don't want to.
Excellent, excellent. Yeah, I think we definitely should look a lot further into it, get people, like, have a view of what they're gonna lose if we don't fix this, or how it's gonna impact their students, because it does. Excellent. Any other discussion on, on that? Excellent. Again, thank you guys for, for the incredibly hard work you've put into making those budget changes right there. I know it's obvious, you did it remarkably. We're down to SMS principal hiring. Do you want to go into, not like before?
We can carry through with this.
All right.
So, in your packet, uh, similar to what we provided for the elementary school, the search timeline, is it the search timeline for the middle school? Um, you will note in D that says we interview the applications on March sixteenth. Because of parent conferences, that will actually be March eighteenth, which is this Friday, I put a note out to, uh, most of the families inviting, um, representation. I've had heard from about a dozen people so far, um, you'll have until Thursday morning to let me know if they're interested, and then you'll, um, pick a couple of people out of the pack to be part of that process. I would like to have at least one, not two board members, uh, be involved in that process. Schedule is below, but our hope would be to be able to bring a nomination to you for that April twelfth, uh, of the year.
I'm gonna have, just put it straight there, I will not, I'm not gonna be there that week, but I believe that's the next week. Um, we'll be going on to a real conference, but are there board members that, board members?
I don't want to, yeah, meetings are very difficult for work.
Generally.
They're, um, they're willing.
Yeah.
Yeah. They have to be after school, they don't have to have any stuff either.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll be working with the committee on Friday, and you're out in back time for interview, but it might be a, like, three-ish, just, I mean, just so you know, for your stuff, because that's what, that's what it was for, like, that, just for after school, but maybe before you could get out.
Yeah.
Get over the four. So the committee will try to figure that out, and work through it the last time, so I'm glad.
Jen.
Yeah. Nobody else, I'm taking.
You are on one hand, too.
We are, and I know it's a little bit of a search, uh, um, on that note, um, we, yeah, I will wait.
All right, any other discussion? All right, to this point, I believe, um, we are going into, you know, this is the first note. Resignations.
So, um, we have received a letter of resignation from Erin Laverie, the student principal, which I, they mostly gathered from our prior conversation, uh, but I, I just want to publicly thank Erin, former source of the district, and congratulate her on her position, and wish her the best in that journey, and we would be motion to accept our resignation.
Before we do the motion, I do want to add that the fact that you've been at a university, I know it is not that easy. Without going into so many book details here, it is not that easy to go through a monster, but I just want to highlight that you've had so many incredible achievements with what you've been able to, even just with your relationships with your edge members, Pat. I believe it's, I won't say where you're going, but there, there. Anything else from the board? All right, I will make a motion to accept the resignation of SMS principal Erin Laverie. On favor?
Add that one recorded, motion passed four zero.
Nominations.
So do we need to go into non-public, um, for nominations, and then three nominations?
All right, do we want to highlight the, um, future meetings before we go there? To kind of just toss that right out. All right, we're gonna skip down to number nine on the agenda for future meetings. We do have an SAU twenty-one operations committee meeting on Thursday, March seventeenth, um, at five thirty P M. We also have the SEU twenty-one joint board policy meeting, um, on Wednesday, March twenty-third, five P M. Um, SEU twenty-one joint board meeting on Wednesday, March thirtieth, at six P M. And our next senior school board meeting, um, on Tuesday, be able to vote at four thirty P M. And can I get a motion to go into non-public under RSA ninety-one?
I will make that motion.
On favor?
Kelly, yeah. Yes.
Forrest?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kelly? Christina?
Yes.
Motion passed at five thirty, morning, you guys are now in non-public.